And I came here in 1986 to run it for myself. I signed the papers and I was owner of The Red Barn Incorporated. People come in here for the experience, more so than I think anything else. And they love the fact that somebody's actually taking the time to listen. Maybe you learn in proportion to how much you listen and care. If you can find that balance between doing what you love that isn't really work, that might pay the bills, and can resonate with people, and actually to some extent, help people. Without my customers, I would be doing what I don't love, guaranteed.
Okay, we'll call this meeting for order. I would ask that you silence your cellphones so they don't interrupt the meeting. And we will begin with a public hearing for ordinance 13, 2017, providing for the amendment of ordinance 4, 2002, the administration of general assistance. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak to ordinance number 13, 2017? If not, we're all set and we'll close that part of the meeting. And we'll begin the regular council meeting. We'll begin with roll call, please. You already did the roll call. Okay, sorry. Pledge of allegiance? I'll entertain a motion for the approval of the minutes. So move. From October 10th. Moved and seconded. Any discussion or corrections? All in favor of approving the minutes, raise your right hand. And then we move on to communications. And we'll start out with an audit report from Mr. Farah. He'd step up to the microphone.
All right, it's that time again already. Felt like I was just here giving this presentation last year. We've got some nice colorful graphs, gonna kinda go over some of the financial information because I know a lot of people don't really look at financial statements every day. And hopefully our summary in here will make things a little bit easier. Before I get started on those graphs, I do want to mention one of the other reports that we issue. It's an unbound letter which is addressed to the town council. And it just lets you know a few things in our audit, let you know what our responsibilities versus management's responsibilities is. Our responsibilities as auditors is to just render an opinion on your financial information to let you know if things are fairly stated in all material respects. We say fairly stated in all material respects because we do not test 100% of your transactions. We do sample-based testing and then if we find errors, increase our sample sizes. Management is responsible for all the financial figures that you'll find within your financial statements. Management also writes the management's discussion and analysis which opens up your financial statements with a story. So all that information comes from management. There's no real auditor's numbers and a lot of people like to call it the audit report. But really the only thing in there from us auditors is the actual opinion. This letter also lets you know if there's any new standards that were applicable to the current year. There is one new item within your financial statements. It's within GASB, which is the governmental accounting standards board, number 77, which deals with tax abatements. And really what this deals with is some of the CEA credit enhancement agreements that you have for your TIF districts. And you're just disclosing the amount that you have paid back to developers. So that's something new that you'll see within your financial statements this year. This letter lets you know if we had any sort of difficulties or disagreements with management. Happy to say, nothing to report. And it lets you know if there's any sort of other audit findings out there that we feel you should be aware of. And I'm really happy to say that there's not much for me to report. You never want your auditor to show up with exciting news because if I show up with exciting news, that means a lot went wrong during the year. You want me to not have much to say, which is going to be the case. So if you'll flip open to, I think, page two of that presentation, you'll see a summary of audit results. The financial statements themselves received an unmodified opinion, which is a clean opinion. That's what you want and that's where everything is fairly stated in all material respects. We also issued two other reports. One's reports required by government auditing standards. This lets you know, this is where we take a look at your internal controls over financial reporting, and let you know if there's any sort of significant deficiencies or material weaknesses within that internal control structure. No material weaknesses, but there is that repeat significant deficiency of relying on us, your auditors, to prepare your financial statements and know all the GASB rules for you. We also issue another report besides this with management letter comments. These are comments that are well below the significant deficiency line. And I just bring that up because I always want to say about the segregation of duties that we, the town staff is smaller and you have certain duties that aren't segregated properly. I really want to bring it up this year because Jean has taken a step back in her role. So you're gonna have someone new in that position. So I would, you know, say to the council, to make sure you're looking over the financial data that you're receiving, to make sure it's right, look over the warrants because you're gonna have somebody new in this position this year. And that's sometimes when controls can kinda get changed or maybe not followed properly because someone who's new to the position isn't sure about what all of, all of the role is for that position. And I'm not saying that's happening, but I want you guys to be aware that that change is happening and that you guys should probably for the first year, really look at the financial information a little bit more closely than what you maybe normally would have. We also issue reports required by the uniform guidance. They used to be called OMB circular A133, also known as your single audit. This year, we tested one program. It was at the school department. It was Title 1A. And happy to say, no findings. So I don't remember the last time we actually had a finding in a federal program here. I think it's been about eight years at this point. So that keeps you guys as a low-risk audity, which means we only have to test around 20% of all federal dollars that run through the town, which includes the school department. So happy to say that, you know, no material weaknesses, no findings in regards to your single audit. So we'll jump into some of this financial information. Like I said, this is all summarized information which you can find inside your financial statements. And this first one's a five-year trend of your total fund balance. Now, I know in your financials, we have the general fund that's separated and we separate out the school and call it the school department operations. School operations are included within all of these graphs since you really budget for it all in one large general fund budget. So fund balance, you could see since 2013, has been on steadily decreasing. You really have been budgeting for use of fund balance, so this shouldn't be a surprise. Overall, fund balance is down around $350,000 from the prior year. If you go town separately, it went down around $385,000. The schools actually increased around $30,000. So for a net decrease of $350,000. If you guys were the perfect budgeters in FY17, your fund balance would have decreased by $877,000 because the council budgeted to use $677,000 of fund balance for your budget and the school budgeted to use $200,000 for their budget. So you budgeted $677 to use, but only decreased $380,000. The school budgeted to use 200, they actually increased 30. And we're gonna talk about why that fund balance changed as it did. I could see that the fund balance is broken down into multiple categories. Unassigned town being the largest, but then there's also the green which is assigned. And this is a fund balance that's assigned for certain purposes. This includes what you budgeted for the FY18 budget, which is around $350,000, I think $346,000 actually. This also includes your fund balance carryforward for sewer. And that's sitting at around $304,000 at the end of June 30. And on page 33 of your financial statements, you could see a list of what's included in those assigned fund balances. So let's see what happened during the year. We're gonna take a look at revenues, some budget to actual, and I'll talk about some of the larger variances. You could see the biggest variance on this page comes from taxes. And your taxes came in over budget just due to better-than-expected collections of excise taxes. We've been seeing this across the state. I think it's really been rebounding. People are purchasing new vehicles. They're seeing a lot more excise tax come in. Charges for service were over budget and most of this was due to tuition students getting more of those than anticipated into the Winslow School District. And then other revenues were came over, and this is mostly due to some miscellaneous revenues at the school. They were pertaining to transportation, special education, and then they share some teachers with some of the other ASU people who are part of the ASU, AOS. So that's where you made up some of the, some of the funds there on the revenue side. On the expenditure side, you'll see that the variances are very, very close to budget. The biggest variance here was protection being overspent by close to $73,000. This, two different parts of that. Overtime and vehicle and radio maintenance exceeded budgets in the fire department. And over on the police department side, regular salaries, including your vacation holidays, exceeded budget within the public safety. Other than that, everything came pretty darn close to budget. I did want to point out that education had only an $86,000 variance, which is less than 1% of their whole budget. I don't know how many times I've ever actually seen a school budget become, come that close to what was actually budgeted. A lot of schools that I audit with, I always see they add a little bit more to their budget and usually have a lot more, larger positive variances there. But you guys here run it pretty darn close to that budgeted amount. The next one is unassigned fund balance as a percentage of budget. And this is where we always like to say, rating agencies may typically be looking for like a 20% fund balance percentage of budget. You know, RKO always has recommended, since I started there, to have, you know, one and a half to two months on hand, which is roughly like 12 and a half to 17%. You could see that if I only take into account the town fund balance, that you're sitting at around 13% now. And that's down from 22% back in 2013. So that's a pretty sharp decrease over the last five years. If you include the school deficit in there, and remember that even though the school has a deficit fund balance that does include the accrual for teacher summer salaries which are paid over July and August, if we count that deficit in there, your fund balance as a percentage of budget is only, is down to 10%. So you've lost about 10% percentage in the last five years by utilizing fund balance, thus causing the fund balance to go down. The next two graphs, kinda just showing you a general fund revenue distribution. This first one's gonna include, it's gonna be both town and school. The next one's just gonna be school only. This is basically looking at your revenues are coming in. Almost all your revenues in your general fund either come from taxes or from the state of Maine. That's pretty much it. That's, it comes to almost 90%. And you could see there's been just a small shift, about one, a little bit over a percent from 2013 to 2017, pushing your local revenues to be funded with local taxes. And you've lost only about a quarter of a percent on the intergovernmental side. I think when you look at schools, it's a little bit more pronounced that the local appropriation. You took a dip in 2017, so you kinda, kinda got away from that. You could see that the local appropriation was rising from 13 to 16, covering, you know, all the way up to 46%. Dropped a percentage down. You actually got a little bit more state subsidy, I think, than in the past. And so that's why you're seeing that intergovernmental portion actually jump up about a half percent. But you could see it's pretty much held steady for the last five years of your look between local and your state of Maine split. The next two graphs are just a couple pie charts, just really kinda showing you where your money's going out to. No big changes in shifts. It's pretty much spot-on from the prior year. I don't think anything even changed by more than a percentage. A couple things I want to mention on here is that that other category, which is around 5 and a half percent, that includes insurance for all your employees at the town. So that's a pretty large figure that goes right in there. So if that came out of that other, you'd see all the other pieces of the pie get a little bit larger because of that insurance cost. And I wanted to talk about your debt service. It's only at about 1.1 million debt service overall. It's sitting at about 5 and a half percent. It's pretty low in comparative with a lot of the communities I have. You did just issue a $2 million bond in FY18, but at the same time, you paid off the crow rope bond in FY17. I think that was the last year of around a $300,000 payment. And FY18, you only have one more payment of $100,000 on the refinanced bond. So you're pretty much gonna be down $400,000 in loan payments and then bringing on an extra 200. So I think at the end, this debt service percentage, you're gonna see that go down in the future as well. Last but not least, I want to talk about the school lunch deficit. This has kinda been a trend across the state. School lunch has been a loser lately as in losing money because, you know, I don't think it's really anything anybody could do. The federal reimbursement rate's very low and for every free lunch that you have to give out or reduce lunch, you only get reimbursed certain amount of cost from the federal government that comes through the state of Maine. This year, the school lunch program lost $43,000 before being supplemented with the general fund of about $50,000. So overall, the fund balance went up around $7,000. If the, and I try to tell everybody, if this type of thing isn't right, really in front of your face all the time, a deficit like this, you're looking at, a lot of times just looking at general fund where school lunch is kinda off to the side or maybe in the back of your financial statements. So I think it's really important to point out that it's in the hole around $200,000 right now. Eventually, this can affect cash flow where, you know, if this deficit keeps getting larger, you know, if the deficit, it's, it's been holding steady on the general fund, but if the general fund deficit in the school, you know, they budgeted to use fund balance, you know, if that budget gets larger, eventually they might run into a cash flow issue where they may need to do some interim borrowing during the year. So it's something that probably needs to be addressed sometime in the near future. You know, right now, it's holding steady where they put in $50,000 or it lost 43, but it's really, really not gonna go away by itself. So it might be something that needs to be handled. So I wanted everybody to be aware that that deficit is out there and it sits on your financial statements as a portion of the unassigned fund balance in the other governmental funds if you're looking at the balance sheet, which is on statement three. Well, that's all of that. Does anybody have any questions about any of the reports we issue, any of the financial information I went through?
Steve?
Oh, go ahead.
Through the chair if I might. Unassigned fund balance as a percentage of budget, you're saying we're at 13%, but really actually probably around 10%? Where are we critical as far as when we go to apply for bonds and for insurance?
I think when they come in and ask questions, I mean, it's, it's, they're gonna look at what your revenue base is and things of that nature. And I'm not really on that side of the fence and don't really deal with rating agencies too much, but a lot of times we've been told that they're looking at like 20%. So I mean, the lower you're getting with, with this fund balance as a percentage of the budget, it's usually just gonna result in higher interest costs for the town eventually when you guys go out to borrow where, you know, someone with, you might see your rating, you might see your actual rating go down if your fund balance keeps going down. I don't know what like a critical level would be in this rating agency's eyes, but I think maybe next time you guys go out to borrow, it could be a good question to ask them to find out what they're looking at. But, you know, eventually, I, I think if I was a rating agency and they're gonna look at this trend from 13 to 17 and watch it decrease 10%, that might be eye-opening to some of the rating agencies.
Mike, on the last bond, did you, when you applied for the bond, did you, did they mention anything or did they say anything?
Yes, that was, there was actually quite a discussion about the use of fund balance. Both rating agencies had a lot of questions about that. One agency downgraded us and the other kept us the same, didn't downgrade us. But in the end, fortunately, we still ended up getting a good interest rate.
But going forward in the future, any, you know, it would be beneficial for us to build that, obviously, to some extent now. And to further deteriorate that would be very, might have some serious negative consequences.
I think we're at the bottom. We're at bottom of the middle when we want to be at it. If anything, we want to stop building it up.
We say that every year. But now we're on the ground. Like this, there's no more.
Yeah. This, this next budget coming up, I doubt we're gonna use.
And I wanna, I'd like to point out that in FY18, again, if I go back to that, if you guys were the perfect budgeters, your fund balance is gonna decrease $350,000. So you're gonna see this percentage drop even lower than it is right now. So you'd probably be under the 10% if, like I said, if your budget comes in perfect. You're gonna be under the 10% at that point.
Yeah.
Refresh my memory, Mike, if I could. In FY18, we, we were gonna use something like $346,000 on the fund balance because of the state education shortfall.
Correct.
When we finally got the education numbers in July, we, we picked up, picked up about $367,000 and we applied that to offset the fund balance. So actually, the thing, our FY18 budget doesn't use any fund balance.
It uses $346,000.
Oh, it uses $346,000.
We had actually budgeted higher than that. And so we did an amendment.
Okay.
And, and so we ended up proposing to use $346,000.
And so we brought in the extra state funding.
Yes.
And applied that to that fund balance utilization, so we dropped it to $346,000. Okay, thank you.
Anybody else have any questions to hang with all these here?
Thank you.
Before I, before I leave, I just want to say thank you to all the staff working. It was kinda like Jean's, I think, last hurrah dealing with us as the auditors. You know, they were very well prepared. The school department very well, well-prepared. I want to say I think there were zero journal entries on the school side, which is a really, which is a big deal. I don't go to many places where there's zero journal entries. And, you know, when I'm showing up, I don't have to adjust one thing and everything's sitting there ready for us. I mean, that helps the audit go along smoother, helps keep your audit costs down and everything like that. And again, we had the same, we always have the same kind of journal entries on the town side, but again, they were well-prepared and we were in and out of here in that two-week time span. And so hard work on their part to get you your audit done and me presenting here in November.
Thank you.
And that, you guys have a great night.
Through the chair if I might.
Yeah.
I know you said that Jean obviously is transitioning out of her position as financial, the financial person. And we have a new person in place. I'm sure, and I'm sure, but just for clarity, that we have checks and balances in the system that, you know what I mean, that would prevent that from happening, honest mistakes from happening or things that we would get deemed for in the future and stuff, Mike. Have we put a plan together for that?
Yeah, we, I, I do on a regular basis, reports, financial reports. You know, occasionally something gets applied to the wrong line item. I haven't had that happen yet with Tanya, but I do watch for that. And the department has to do as well.
Okay.
They're looking because they check there. When they get the reports from me, they check. And if there's any discrepancies there, they bring it to my attention.
Okay. You all set?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time. Okay, we're gonna skip public comments since we'll have that at the end of the meeting and we'll save more time for that. And we'll move on to reports of committees and commission and begin with the town manager's report.
I have nothing to report on my report. Any questions?
Does anybody have any questions for the town manager?
If I may, through the chair, sorry. I just, I know that it's not in the report, but I believe the committee for the junior high demolition and that, that process met. Is there anything you can add to that, Mike? I'm sure there's some interest in that.
Yep, they, the committee wants to pause until the issues with the school renovations are addressed because they wouldn't want to get started on a project for the junior high, only to find out perhaps later that there's a change in decision that may impact that. So we're gonna put that on hold for now.
Any other questions for Mike?
Oh.
Yes, go ahead.
How do we stand with the tear down of this house on, down his barn?
The contractor's been in the building and he's been emptying it out, getting it prepared to demolish it. So we're still moving in that direction.
Go ahead.
How is Clinton Avenue going?
I think it's just about done. I saw today that they put the curbing in and they're gonna get the sidewalk done on the north side, but not on the south side until next year.
Any more questions?
Are they gonna leave the anthill covers and the catcher basement rates and double elevation or are we gonna pave around them?
Yeah, I don't know. Is Paul here? Paul's probably not here.
Yeah, Paul is.
I'm sorry, he was hiding.
Don't wear that jacket when you're here.
We stick a one-layer hot dog to put on that for this year for another inch and a half, hopefully. They're looking at Thursday this week, but Thursday's supposed to rain, so pushing for Wednesday.
I think you said that last month.
What's that?
I think you said that last month.
This time of the year, it's hard to pin down the contractors. They're all waiting for that one warm day to put asphalt down. I did see they moved the paper in today, so we know we're the wrong list, but there won't be anything sticking up for the plows. Definitely get all the driveways paved and that one sidewalk on the north side's gonna get paved. The south side, we're gonna wait till spring once they get the poles moved. My understanding is they have all the easements for the poles.
For the poles, yeah.
But knowing CMP what they just had the last couple weeks, obviously their priorities have shifted.
Right. Right. Anybody else have a question for Paul while he's up?
I'm not done.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I had a couple complaints about the hill being dark at night. Can we get CMP to put a couple of lights?
It's our fault. We took the lampposts down. We haven't put anything back up. I hated to put new lights on the old poles, but I think we're gonna have to.
Ah, 'cause you're afraid, you're afraid this, the pole replacement will take so long that we ought to put the lights back on the old ones?
No, I'm thinking, we had taken off the metal poles. There was two metal poles that we took out because they rolled and dilapidated with the thought of putting new streetlights on the new utility poles. New poles haven't gone up. And it looks like it may not be for a while, so, yeah, we'll probably have to put some lights on the old poles still. They switch them on. I can make that call tomorrow.
What? Oh, you don't? Ben?
Yeah, through the chair. How do we stand on the business over on Joe Ave previously?
My engineer's working on it slowly. He got called in for jury duty, so he's stuck in Augusta for a little bit, but.
So we won't be, we'll be schools starting that this fall?
I want to go out to bids this fall. Depending on the weather, we may start. Depending on whether how fast winter comes in and how fast the cold does and who the contractor is.
Come spring, it's gonna be a mess again, if at all.
We'll get by.
Yeah.
But if we can get something done, I know I've got one contractor that would be interested in working through part of the winter, at least off-road, but it's gonna depend if they're the little bid.
You all set then? Any more questions? Okay. Thank you, Paul.
You're welcome.
Okay, so the rest of the reports, the parent reports, finance committee report and the financial report. Does anybody have any questions? And if not, I'll entertain a motion to accept all reports.
Move.
Moved and seconded, accept all reports. All in favor, please raise your right hand. And we move on to unfinished business. Ordinance number 13, 2017, providing for the amendment of ordinance number 4, 2002, the administration of general assistance. This is the second reading. Is there any?
So move.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Is that a roll call?
Yes.
Okay, if there's no discussion, we'll have a roll call vote.
Ray Karen?
Yes.
Jeff West?
Yes.
Ken Fletcher?
Yes.
Ken Twitchell?
Yes.
Jerry Kirian?
Yes.
Steve Russell?
Yes. Moving on to new business, order number 17, 2017, providing for the sale of tax-acquired property. You guys, be it ordered by town council, town of Winslow's files, whereas the town of Winslow has acquired the properties described in the attached list and has determined that the town has no use of said property. And whereas the town manager will be listing the properties with a local realtor, now therefore be it ordered by town council, that the town manager is hereby authorized to negotiate and sell the tax-acquired properties as described in the attached list through the listing realtor and to issue quick claim deed for the properties.
So move.
Moved and seconded. It's on the table for discussion.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Go ahead.
These two properties were the result of a sewer foreclosure. It's my understanding they've been vacant for over a year. And I'd like to work with the realtor to sell them, like we did the other two places on Markham Street.
Are they habitable?
Yes.
Any other questions? Roll call, something? No, that's not a roll call? Pardon? Oh. If we're all set, we'll have a roll call vote.
Jerry Kirian?
Jerry Kirian.
Yes.
Patricia West. Yes. Ben Twitchell.
Yes.
Jeff West.
Yes.
Ray Karen.
Yes.
Ken Fletcher.
Yes.
Steve Russell.
Yes. I would entertain a motion to take resolution thirty-five, thirty-six, thirty-seven, thirty-eight as well.
So move.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those resolutions are on the table. Are there any questions about any of them? If not, all in favor, please raise your right hand. Poll the same sign, pass unanimously. And that ends our business for tonight, and we'll begin with discussion. Do we need to discuss telephone polls? What was your discussion on telephone polls? We get that thing very well.
There's a number of old poles that are sitting there with new poles right next to them, and it's increasing more and more in town. It seems that the area utilities, CMP, Fairpoint, Spectrum.
You can look at me, I don't care.
Yeah.
It's not my department.
Well, at least I got a little. I'm, I'm not cleaning these up. They're leaving their lines on them. They sit there for four, five, six years. We're gonna get to a point, there's gonna be a lot of these poles all over the place. Some of them are gonna probably get so bad they could fall down. And we're not, and I don't believe that we should be taking the lead on removing these poles. We should be getting in touch with them and working. How long are you gonna keep old poles sitting there before they transfer stuff over?
Any thoughts? Go ahead.
What's the process to do that, you know, to work with, with utilities? Because we can't take them down.
No, historically, we haven't been involved in that process.
Okay.
And I don't know what the issue is, that the utilities like Fairpoint are delayed in moving their utilities. I was under the impression they had to do it within a certain timeframe.
No such thing.
Well, there is, depending on who owns the pole.
Yeah. Problem is, is, you know, we leave the stuff there sometimes three, four, five, six years.
Are they falling in the road? Like what? I mean, they just look bad?
They're an eyesore for one. I don't worry in front of my house. I work for the company.
And there's a lot of them.
If we could find out what, you know, what the standard is, meaning, you know, what's the expected time of removal of old poles and see if there is a standard. Then with a letter from the town to each of those utilities asking for their plan to be submitted by a certain date as to when these are removed, if they're beyond a certain period of time, you know, I don't know if that working off, but at least we formally have noticed that we understand that there's an issue and just see what the response is.
Probably have to get with CMP. What I don't know is what poles
Right.
in the timeframe, so I may have to communicate with CMP to find out which poles they've replaced or intend to replace but haven't been replaced.
Right.
And maybe get a sense from them of what they're, so then I can identify the poles that have been, that have not been addressed, but have been there the longest. And then perhaps start there.
Yeah, but see, the CMP part has been changed over.
Right.
Those have all been swapped over, just the cable and the towel. We got a whole strip of them on Ice Creek and say CMP come right in and did them, 'cause they put the poles up. So is the issue the old poles hanging, uh, holding?
The, I mean, holding the phone and.
And cable, okay.
'Cause that needs to be swapped, 'cause the new ones and then the old taken.
They cut them right off above, they cut them right off above with the, with the cables, so.
Yeah.
And when was yours done? Do you know?
Well, a month or so ago.
Okay, so.
So yours are more recent on that.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So they probably got time still. They probably haven't passed that deadline.
All we gotta do is find out what the deadline is.
That's, I think that's the first step, finding out if there's a time.
One, one of the things that happens is the utilities sometimes don't communicate good among themselves. They won't notify, CMP gets theirs done, but they might not notify Spectrum, who's the next one on top.
Correct.
And it could be sitting there for months or years, and then after that, it's Fairpoint. And that's the same thing. Spectrum's leasing, but the next one after that is Fairpoint. And if Fairpoint doesn't go in and get their lines up, they'll just leave them right there. Could be four, five years.
But the poles are CMP poles, right?
Well, it's.
Depends on town.
On town.
The one in front of my house is a CMP pole.
Okay. Okay, so I guess, I guess the first step.
Well, it may not be a rush. Yeah.
Okay.
Let's see where I can find out about time frame.
Are we set to move on to school renovations, the next steps? You all set, Joe?
Yep, I'm also. I'd like, thank you.
So, open for discussion. Is it school renovations, the failure of the bond, and what's our next step? And I assume, do you guys wanna discuss this first amongst ourselves and then open up to the public, or do you wanna hit some public input first? What's, what's your preference? And you got a handout, Ben?
Yeah, I think maybe if, if we have an initial discussion amongst ourselves and then go from there.
Now, one side.
You can.
You want me to pass me some?
Whatever you want to do.
To the public?
Whatever you want to do.
Yeah.
Well, that's the same one you handed to Kevin before. Hey, what do you guys wanna begin?
Pass those out.
Thank you. Do you wanna begin or?
Go ahead.
Well, you have a good, Mr. Chairman. I think, you know, I think that the idea will be to build from what we've already done. Meaning we, we as a group as a whole, you know, I don't think we need to go back to ground zero and start from, from, from that point because I think a lot of good work has been done. So, one of the ideas would be is to take that information and try to, and try to have a joint effort between the council and the school board plus other committee members to really look at seemingly the most two, logical two options, which is consolidation. I don't think anybody has come up and said we need to keep the junior high. I haven't heard that from any of the voters and I haven't heard that from any of the school members. As a matter of fact, their vote is already taken to close the junior high, so, you know, we just couldn't say go back and reverse that. That's the direction. So it's really a question of determining what the next options would be to bring to the voters, hopefully as soon as we can, June, hopefully, that will put forth a plan that has taken a look at what's there and then bring it forward to the voters. And to do that, I think we, you know, we, we've really gotta work together on this, as we have in the past, and move forward expeditiously over the next couple, three months and get this resolved. And I think some folks have pulled together a proposal for, for a building committee, and that seems to be, at least in my mind, a pretty straightforward approach. A combination of three, three members of the town council, three members of the school board, three community members, and then actually begin that process of taking input, utilizing the good work that's been done already, and having an advisory committee, which is really made up of the school employees and administrators, to really look at these two options and then get some hard, not hard and fast, but another look at the projected costs and maybe get a verification of those so that we can move forward. That's a thought.
And whose idea was this?
Matt.
Was this your idea?
Yes.
Oh, it was mine and Ben.
Yeah.
Ben and Jerry?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, yeah, it's business.
Couple of thoughts I had.
The only thing that I would, I think I'd rather go back to November, a year from now, for a vote, because in the June referendum, you don't usually get very many people, and we would have to rush.
Personally, I would hesitate to wait till next fall for another vote. I think that's, I think that's. It's a primary for the governor's race, so it's gonna be turnout.
Yeah, it'll be a good turnout this June.
You got, you got multiple primary races for governor. Did you have a question?
No, I just, we're just part of the discussion. What, what I believe in, I, I do believe there's a lot of good work that's been done, and I believe that the current building committee's in a position to make the best decisions, you know. Maybe we need to tweak that building committee a little bit. My suggestion might be to add two counselors to the building committee and add two, you know, at-large people or whatever number that we decide to the current structure that we have. I think Ben's idea, and if I'm wrong, Ben, please, please interrupt me, would be to form a whole new committee. Would form a new committee and use pretty much the existing building committee as an advisory committee. Is, is that correct, Ben?
Yeah, basically, basically. Although the advisory part of it, as far as I'm concerned, could be the old committee, which, which was the principals and the superintendent and stuff like that. Those were part of the old committee, and I, I feel as though they could be part of the advisory committee, a part of the role. And then three counselors and three school board members and community members would basically sit down and put together what's, you know, a lot of what's already been done, okay? Well, when I went through the, I went through the minutes, all of the minutes that have been put online since this started, two thousand ten to twelve, okay? And read down through this weekend how it kind of unfolded. And I, reading through it, there was a straw vote taken back in two thousand thirteen, fourteen to zero, to go with the elementary change. None for the high school change. Then in two thousand fifteen, all of a sudden, the elementary was put out due to sticker shock of five point five million, and it went towards the high school. I, I can't comprehend that. I haven't found any figures in there different than that figure. And all of a sudden, we went from five point five for the elementary to the ten point three two five. This, this last vote said people didn't wanna spend ten point three two five. We've got to go from there and figure out where we're going. And I just thought this, this is a way that we could do it, be transparent to the community and help the community evolve.
So who are the, sorry, sorry.
That's fine.
Who are the members you're, I'm assuming you've already picked the three councils?
No, I haven't picked anything. I've just put this out. Nobody's been picked.
Okay.
Okay, that's why I, I tried to get around to all the counselors yesterday, and they're the only one that couldn't get a hold of. To explain my approach on this, nothing has been determined. This is just the outlines that I thought might work.
The council doesn't even have say about dismantling the committee. The school board does, correct? So the school board would have to vote to dismantle the twenty-five-member committee and do this committee.
It's just like, it, I'm just gonna reiterate my point of before is I think that the building committee, I believe that, that we need, you know, we, we need added, added input to the, to the committee that's on there now. And I think because the council has a strong opinion on this, adding the weight of additional counselors and maybe some at-large individuals from the community on the current building committee, I mean, the building committee is huge now. And I, yeah, it's big, and, you know, you always get into a committee that, once it gets too big, but the subcommittees have done an excellent job, and their expertise is when you're dealing with these issues, it's nice to have that expertise there.
That's why I put them in it, in the, that amount of people in the advisory section.
Yeah, 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 and I, I get that.
Thrown out as a garbage. I mean, they're still there.
Yeah.
But they're, they're set together differently.
I have a, I have a, go ahead, Brad, if you want to finish your thought, I'm sorry.
I'm just saying, it's just my opinion that if we added counselors to the, you know, and we have, we went out to vote for their opinion. And this is, this is a discussion, obviously. We went out to vote and, you know, it was twelve hundred to one, one thousand, you know, that says that, that, you know, they felt that the ten point three million, there were twelve hundred people that felt that way. There was also a thousand people that felt that the tax increase that we had was, was fine with them, and they would support that project and the current school project. Somewhere out there, it shouldn't be very hard to get to, to some type of figure. There must be somewhere that we could come in and come in. No, and maybe that's, maybe the council, and again, without getting into too much discussion, the original committee, and I'm, have to assume some of the responsibility to that, we were pretty vague in setting guidelines on that building committee. And maybe in retrospect, that, you know, but we all had input along the way, too. We actually had, on the first vote, I believe the, it passed that initial four to two. So we're, we're a lot closer, even on the council, and now we got public input. We know we can't be there. We have to be someplace. How do we get to that someplace? And how do we get so that we all can agree on that number? And what mechanism do we use to get to that, to that place? And it's my opinion that we don't form a new committee, that we just add input into the other committee or maybe get some guidelines from the council as to ways to do that.
Okay, this was my thought. Maybe I'm off base a little bit. I'm not sure we have to take it out to referendum. If we, as the, if we could come to a conclusion here of what would be an acceptable amount, that we find acceptable. We had pretty much a split council on the ten point three, much the same way the town was. And so I'm wondering if we can't just negotiate a figure ourselves right now. Not, not right now, over the course of a couple of weeks. What I'm trying to do is bypass, bypass the referendum process if I, if we could. And for instance, I'll throw out a number. You guys did not like the ten point three. I assume you don't like nine point three, right?
Right.
Or about eight point three?
Yeah, I don't wanna trade voices.
No, but what I'm saying is, what I'm saying is, I don't wanna go down the same road we did last time. If we are gonna form a committee or if we're gonna tweak the existing committee, let's give them a guideline, at least. The minimum, we should say, we're only gonna put an eight million dollar bond up. Live with that. Go ahead.
I think there are two primary questions from what I heard from voters, not all twenty-three hundred, but the ones that contacted me and the ones I spoke with. There is an issue, and before I go there, I was reading a superintendent's town, town report from two thousand five, and they were looking at a forty-member task force of volunteers worked throughout the year to analyze the information on facilities, assessment reports, aroma and so forth. They came up with possible building options included, staying with the current three-school model, moving to a two-school model to include either K through eight and nine through twelve, or K through six and seven through twelve. That was in two thousand five, right? So I don't think that we're gonna change fundamentally from those, from the same thing they found in two thousand five to what we have found in two thousand seventeen. But I think from what I heard from people, there are two primary questions. One of them is, should we go and reexamine going through a K through eight as opposed to just stay with the seven through twelve? That's, you know, a lot of people said, hey, I'm not in favor of going with the seven through twelve. Right or wrong, that was what I heard. Then the next question is, what is, what is that going to require for resources? And what will be an acceptable level of bonding that the voters of Winslow think is appropriate? I think we do need to go to referendum because they've already said that the recommendation. I think we do need to go to referendum because they've already said that the recommendation coming from the school board and council was not acceptable to them. So for us to go around that, I think would be, I don't want to say injustice, but certainly would be sending a message that we didn't like the way you voted, so now we're going to do it ourselves.
No, I don't think that's what I, I'm not sure that's what I was proposing. And maybe I've said it wrongly. There's no sense in going down the road of renovations unless we, unless the committee knows what we will accept to put on in the next ballot, for instance, for lack of a better chance.
And that's what I think this committee and, and, and I'll call it a leadership committee here if you want, rather than a building committee, is that's what I would hope we would get out of this. Three members of the school board, three members of the town council, three members of the community, that group should be able to reach a consensus and come out with a recommendation to move forward with. And utilizing the, the existing building committee and not go back and try to repeat it, just use the information we've got, bring that up to date and look at those options again without going all the way back. Because that was, that was a little bit of a surprise to me. We, we've done this before. We did it in two thousand five. So we don't need to go to ground zero. We, we just need to pick up from where we left off. And I would recommend that we look at two options, the K through eight again, and the seven through twelve and the K through six. And take the existing information, maybe enhance it a little bit, and then go from there.
And one other thing is this committee doesn't have to be three, three, three. It could be three, three, five, as long as you get a large number.
Right.
Ben, did you want to ask something?
Yes, uh, let's see, I went through all of the minutes to all the meetings. And back in January twentieth, two thousand fifteen, Stapper started right off talking about Stephen Blatt giving an estimate of the cost to build a wing off the elementary, okay? The cost was five point five million, and says, that put a halt on things. The next set of minutes, things went right to the high school. I, I was wondering why it went right, right to the high school from this, from the five point five to do the work at the elementary to come out to the ten point three two five. You see what I'm saying? I, I, because I, I've always, I've always looked at the, at the elementary K to eight over going to the high school. One of the, one of the reasons, as I say, I've heard from, from the people in Winslow is putting the seventh and eighth graders, the eighth graders, which are thirteen, in with the eighteen-year-olds. If you put the building addition on to the high school, they've got to go from that addition that we put on the high school through the high school to get to the library, to get to the cafeteria, to get to the gym. And Mr. Blatt looked at this in some of the minutes, that if we put it on the elementary school, they could keep the seventh and eighth separated from the lower grades because that, that addition is on that other end of the school, they'd have access to the cafeteria, the library, and the gym without going through the elementary, the rest of the elementary. After I read that, I said, why did things change? And I mean, we have two counselors here. I'm asking the question, why did it change?
Back in twenty fifteen?
Well, the, the minutes here was twenty, uh...
Twenty fifteen, right?
Yeah.
I believe the five million was just for classrooms, not making changes to the cafeteria, to the gym, to the library, to the parking situation, to the front of the building, including security, and maybe needing a second entrance. If I'm wrong, I'm wrong. But it's for twenty fifteen, so I'm not.
Yeah, also in the minutes, back in two thousand thirteen, uh, that, that they took a look at it, Mr. Blatt took a look at it and said that he did not feel there was a problem at the elementary for these other things, the things that we could do, but it wouldn't be a showstopper to put that addition on the elementary.
So is your problem with the committee or is your problem with Stephen Blatt?
No, no, no. I, I'm just saying, you all met together with Mr. Blatt. I wasn't there, okay? I apologize for not being in all of the meetings. So I, all I can go by is what the minutes tell me. And the meeting minutes tell me that he took a look at the elementary, thought that was a viable place to go after the straw vote, fourteen zip, to go with the elementary from the committee that was there at that time. And that he saw that it would be a viable thing to do with the elementary, to keep things separate, to put that on there. And, and then in fifteen, it says to get up to five point five million, it was sticker shock, bang, they, they went, you know. I don't know, I, I'm just, I'm trying to put all this together in my head, and that's what I come up with.
Raymond, go ahead.
We did come up, I, I don't know where the figures are. I was involved in this project in two thousand fifteen, but all I know is that the information that we got after that was saying that the elementary school project with the add-ons that had to be happened, and that was what, what Councilman West, Councilperson West said, was that was the case. Now, if the council wants to go and reexamine that, then they have every right to go and reexamine a K through eight configuration if they want to, if they've got some questions. My point is, is that what is the best format that, that to do that and to get those answers addressed? It's just my personal opinion that the committee that's in place with added members is in the best position so that you can answer those questions. Because even the advisory committee, now whether we change their role or not, but having them as part of the committee is extremely important because of the input and probably the time limitations that we might have to get the answers. We have another committee then, where the committee has to then go and report and find out things from the advisory committee. To me, with added members, that the current committee with the architect that we have in place right now is in the best position, Ben, Councilman Twitchell, to answer, to answer those questions. And that's just, that's just what I feel, is that, that we can move forward on this with some tweaking of the committee and answer those questions that the council has in that particular area in the most efficient way that we can, and getting the input in the most efficient way that we can from the people that are in the system and educating our kids. That's just my opinion. I wouldn't be qualified to make a, to make a determination what, what's needed in the elementary school for, for educating our kids in the proper manner at that point. That's just what I think.
I agree with Ray. I think that a committee and then an advisory committee or a leadership committee or whatever you want to call it, it's too many committees. And I think that's why we're having this problem is this committee has been formed for five years and then, you know, you don't like the outcome, so you dissolve it and you make a new one. It's like, they only, the vote only lost by two hundred, not a thousand. So I think that the committee in place needs to regroup and reassess what we've done. We've put a lot of work and a lot of effort into this, and I don't think that it should be dissolved so that a new committee can be formed. I think that we need to go back and, and work through the numbers because people have spoken and we just need to re-figure it.
Good, Mr. Chairman. I think that there may be a misunderstanding. No one is saying dissolve the building committee, it's just change their role to be an advisory committee. Excuse me.
One second, one second. You guys have your chance.
Excuse me.
You guys have your chance. Let, let us speak for a minute.
Do you mind if I complete my thought? How are you?
Go ahead.
What do you, I'm saying, take the work that the, that the building committee has done, bring that forward to, and I'll use the term a leadership committee, because this group is now going, not go back and start from ground zero, but simply take the information which has already been done, go through a process that looks at the education output, the quality, what's the best system and what's the cost. And then hopefully be able to reconcile all that to say, we have reached a consensus that says this is the right measure to bring forward to the voters. So nobody should think that the building committee has been given a pink slip because we need that information to come forward so we aren't going back to ground zero. We're building off what's already been done. And, and, and as here, you know, this will be an important piece of work and we need that expertise to be a part of this, not another committee, but another purpose, which is to reach a consensus as to what we can bring forward to the voters, that they will approve, and we have a strong base of support. I don't want to keep doing this back and forth. I would, this time, learn from what we've done. We know what the issues are. Let's deal with those specific issues and bring that forward in a comprehensive manner. So, you know, I must not be saying it the same as others. This isn't throwing them out. This is just bringing them back with this other group that can hopefully reach a consensus as to how we move forward.
And with no sense in taking twenty-five and making it thirty either. That's why I put the proposal out here, that's what, three, nine or ten people on, on, on the initial one, and then the advisory committee can be as big as it wants to be. But you put thirty people, you put thirty people, you hit twenty-five now, well, what happens? So if we went with thirty, what's going to happen? We're not going to get, come down to consensus, I don't feel. That's the only reason I proposed it that way, okay?
If, if I might, through the chair, before we, I, I think we should open it up at some point to public, too. But it's just a matter of how do we get there? I think it's a difference of opinion. It's just my opinion that, that, you know, how we get there is, we get there with the same format we have, we tweak it to add a few more. And I, I understand, Ben, I understand what you're saying about the number of people, it's odd when, but we get, you know, when we have questions, we can just send them back and it's, it's there and the answers come forward and then we, we tweak. I, I think the council can achieve that type of, still that type of, I, I wouldn't say control, but they can still achieve the same result by setting us, by having a specific, by coming up with a specific set of guidelines that you want to do, that you want us as part of the committee to look at without handcuffing the committee, but we're setting guidelines and the vote says, you know, what we can do for guidelines, too. I think, you know, says that we're not, we're not where we need to be with the money that's there. That's, and that's, again, that's my opinion.
I think it's, I see some validity to that. Why, why form another committee if we don't set parameters? And if you're going to set parameters, let, let the, let the existing committee run with those parameters.
And there's fourteen people back in two thousand thirteen, there were fourteen people on the building committee, and it blossomed to twenty-five. So, and I can't see going from twenty-five to thirty, I, I don't know. That's the reason I put it down like that.
I understand, yeah. And just to finish, I would be, if, you know what I mean, there's a question of whether the council feels that the original members of, I would be fine to, from my point of view, would be to resign from the building committee. And if you wanted to pick new members that you felt more representative of the process, then that would be fine with me, too.
And that wasn't, that wasn't even...
I know that, I know that, but I'm just saying that if, if we want to tweak the committee or we want to do something that you think would be more representative of what the council feels, I would be, I wouldn't step in, I wouldn't stand in the way of that either.
Okay, that's more of a summer...
I know, I know that, Ben, but I'm just stating that.
Because it's harder to come up with an answer with twenty-five or thirty than it is with nine or ten.
I'm not resigning. I'm not resigning.
It's hard to come up with an answer when there's seven of us, too.
Are we going to have, as a council and the school board, that's had a later date, we'll have to meet together to discuss this?
I assume there will be a meeting between the school board and the council, yeah? That would be my assumption.
Can we open this for discussion?
Yeah, I think we're ready to, aren't we? You know, somebody else wants to add something real quick. We have some, we have some collective wisdom in the room that maybe we should tap into. So if, in a orally manner, if you want to step up to the mic, state your name and your address, and give us your thoughts on what process we should take moving forward.
Can I start again?
Go ahead, Joel.
Joel Selwood, I'm a school board member, District One. So I got a few notes here based upon this piece of paper we just got. So obviously, the, the plan that got put forward went down by a two-hundred vote margin or so. I think there is a question on how we go forward from here. One of my big questions is, where are people's heads at? I mean, I think we're making a lot of assumptions on, on where people are and what they like or didn't like and whatever, and I guess at some point we have to make some assumption to that because we didn't have a poll of the twelve hundred people that voted against it as to what their thoughts were. But having been on the building committees, I'm wondering about making sure the people that are making decisions on this, whether at, at a committee level, and hopefully, you know, a general electorate level, that we have educated voters in what we're going forth with. So obviously, educating the general public is something we do after we come up with a plan. So as far as the committee goes, going forward, I don't have a problem with the size of the committee as it exists now. We want to add another board member, we want to add another council member, whatever. There's some changes, I think, because of the election anyway, they're going to come into play with personnel anyway. But in the end, of course, this whole thing has to pass by the council and it has to pass by the voters if the council decides that they're going to send it to referendum or put it on here, as you've suggested is a possibility. So I think even if there are three council members on this committee, I would recommend that all the council members are at these meetings and because it has to pass by this council. So not only be there and maybe you have three voting members and there's twenty-five other people, it doesn't matter because everybody there understands what the process is going to be and what it's going to need to go forward. So as much as the other twenty-five members might want something, what are we going to be able to go forward with? The council, councilmen, councilpeople are going to be there. You know, we can have conversation about it, but ultimately, it's going to get by the council, it's going to get by the voters. So, so I think it's important, I think, for the counselors to be there as well as many other people that can be there, that I question how much the people are educated on the various topics associated with this project. So in making decisions and assumption as to what's in and what's out is important with this. And even for the counselors that weren't there from the beginning, going back to some we were discussing on the K eight option, as Council, Councilperson West mentioned, for example, the five million, my recollection of that on that was Stephen Blatt at that point was doing pro bono work for us for nothing, and he had come up with for X amount of classrooms, I think it would be X amount of dollars, and that's where five million came from. It wasn't until we got further down the road and determined what all the different needs were that weren't being addressed, that he wasn't aware of because we hadn't got into the depth of the project, as it is with each of these proposals as they've come forward. You know, you start with the basics. You've got X amount of kids, you need X amount of classrooms. It isn't until you add on the extra things, and they're not extras, they're stuff we do, that you need the space, whether it's more gym space because we have a very active parks and rec program. So, yeah, he can cover the gym space for, for maybe the school, but maybe not for parks and rec needs. Doesn't understand that it gets used as many hours a day as that it does. And those sorts of things, what locker rooms get used, what don't, the arts programs, all these other things that came later in, in, is why the number... all these other things that came later in, in is why the numbers, I think, largely changed. So, for those of us who were there back in the beginning, I think, you know, I think it went from the five to whatever the number was for the K-eight that it wasn't five, the five million, yes, was kind of sticker shock to, to a certain extent, but it really became sticker shock when we talked about, well, it doesn't include this, 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 this. Well, once you add those, we knew we were way out of line, okay? Whatever the number was. Now, if we need to go back to that and read, you know, go through that, you know, there's some information that is available to back up what was included at certain plans. I'm sure Stephen Blatt has the layouts of what those various things were and what it included and what it didn't, that we knew we needed, that he didn't know we needed when he first came up with the original concept and therefore five million dollars. So, I think it's important to, if we're gonna go back to look at the K-eight option, we gotta go back and look at some of those things and educate those who weren't involved in the first go-around as to how we got to where we are now. And, and then in that step going forward, okay, if it's going to be, if we go back to the same, get back to the same point that that is cost prohibitive and we're at the seven-twelve option, where is it we're gonna go with seven-twelve? Talked about seventh graders in being with high schoolers and so forth. There was a lot of discussion about bell schedules, so they're not passing at the same time. I mean, it would be no different than the time they spend on the school bus that they'd see each other because they're passing at different times. Some of those sorts of things that were being discussed that, you know, not everybody may be up to speed on. So, I think it's important for those that's particularly gonna be decision makers upfront on this, including the council, that everybody get up to speed on what those, what those things are. Because for example, I mean, you know, even this make the assumption of, you know, seven, eight at the high school, no, no pack. Well, obviously, that was a big controversy, but what about, I mean, I've heard people say we don't need the half gym expanded to a full gym, we don't need the cafeteria added on, we don't need this, we don't need that. Well, where is everybody's heads at? I think we're making a lot of assumptions on where people's heads at. What is acceptable? Because if we're talking an eight million dollar price tag is the be all end all no matter what, what are we gonna get for that? Because cutting off just the pack isn't gonna get you there because it doesn't provide all the spaces needed for some of the other things. Because that was teaching space, it's not just for the play that's gonna happen next week or this week, for example. So, so I think there needs to be some examining of some of that detail to determine that because the pack wasn't just an auditorium, for example, it was some build space, some set space and things like that. There are building sets in the hallway. I'm sure the fire code people wouldn't care very much for that. I mean, so even if we don't build, you know, a stage in the house, you know, we need to consider some of these other things. So, just cutting off one thing doesn't mean you're gonna get to eight million. So, there's some details that have to go around with some of those, those things that need to be discussed. And I think getting, you know, the people that are definitely, whether they're on the committee or the council afterwards, I think, you know, they need to be involved in this process, no matter what this committee looks like. So, so in the end, I mean, it's gotta get past the council and, and the board and such. So, I'm hoping that, you know, do we have to go back and backtrack a little bit and educate some people? I think that might very much be part of the process. So, those are my thoughts, maybe I'll add some other thoughts that people add on here.
Thank you, Joel. Do you wanna try to get a opposing view or like alternate if we could? Like, there's somebody with a, with a-
See, I don't know if we need a debate.
Yeah, let's-
Mr. Chairman, I don't think that-
Maybe I would, maybe for, maybe I'll put a time limit on people from now on. I allow Joel to speak a little extra since he was representing the school board, I think, and I thought that was appropriate. And so, I think for the future speakers, we'll take a look at the time a little closer. But thank you, Joel, for your, I appreciate it.
I hope I covered a lot of ground and-
Yeah, you did. And you were, you were speaking for the whole school board, so I allow you a little extra. Okay, the next person would like to come up to the mic and, and express their thoughts? Go ahead.
Earl Combs, Seventeen Monique Avenue, and I'm also a member of the school board. I'd like to speak first of all to the K-through-eight proposal. That configuration was discussed. There are some educational reasons. We are building an educational space and obviously, we have physical concerns, but we should also be paying attention to the education that's going on in that space. Seventh and eighth grade students are closer in age to twelfth grade students than they are to kindergarten and first grade students. They need spaces that are more similar to the spaces that you find in the high school. Putting sixth, seventh, and eighth at the elementary school would put a large number of students in, in one building. And for educational reasons, the K-through-six, seventh-through-twelve was considered preferable. I am a member of the current building committee and I would recommend keeping the building committee. I think having a large committee may be a little unwieldy, but it's good to have the expertise. And I think Councilman Russell, your suggestion of putting some financial guidelines is, is a good one. And I think taking that back to the building committee, we can come up with something that would be reasonable. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody ask?
Mary Beth Burgling, ten Promrose Street. I'm a teacher at the junior high school and I'm also on the building committee. As a fourth-generation citizen of this town, I find myself disillusioned by the results of the vote, but moreover, by the lack of respect by some members of the council displayed and voiced about the extensive, about the extensive time and time-consuming work that the building committee put in to the responsible design of the plans. The lack of the support for the work that the two of the councilors put in is also baffling. They represented the council extremely well. They spoke up, they gave your opinion, they kept us in check for what would happen here. The result of the bond vote shows that while little more than half of those that voted were not in support of the plan, just under half did want the plan to move forward. I'm fully aware that the plans for the auditorium is the piece of the bond that many of you spoke out against, some of you actually calling it a Taj Mahal, which is highly offensive to those of us that put time into this planning. The need for the auditorium that is bigger than two hundred seats is real. It is not fluff, as it has been called. The general mistrust of the educational professionals being on the committee is disheartening, to say the least. We were accused of having an agenda, of being a heavy-handed attempt to get a pack, which basically was a six-hundred-seat auditorium, no frills. Might we have been the people most qualified to speak for the needs of our students and the people who invested, who are invested in making those students successful? Many of the opposition really have no idea what the current state graduation requirements are for the kids or the co-curricular or extracurricular offerings are. For example, people might not be aware that all high school students have to have a fine arts credit when they graduate. Intro to drama, theater exploration, speech and oral interpretation, chorus and general music are just some of the offerings that the kids have to take to graduate. Now factor in the junior high courses. Where are they gonna go? The need for an auditor, beer auditorium is real. And if you need proof, this coming weekend, Grease is being performed. So far, Friday's performance is sold out, Saturday's performance is sold out, Thursday's performance is under twenty tickets left. While we're disappointed with the outcome, we educational professionals would like to move forward and find a way to meet the needs of all the students in a way that is agreeable to the majority of the town. Same needs still exist when we formulated our plan. We ask that the plan be returned for modification to the original building committee, who have already dedicated so many volunteer hours towards this project. It's been years. And just as before, all Winslow residents are welcomed at the meetings to express their concerns and ask questions. To completely discount the building committee's work and form a new committee would be disrespectful and disingenuous. Ray and Trish, I thank you for your great work you done on the committee. You both kept, kept the concerns and needs for the citizens of our town in the forefront of the work that we did. And Mr. Russell, I also thank you for showing support of the work that we did. Schools are the lifeline of a town. It's what draws residents to an area. Our school is no different. The real losers in this race and in this bond were the kids and their education. As Ben Franklin said, "An investment in knowledge pays the best interest."
Thank you.
I'm a little baffled tonight by the people speaking and listening to some of the council members. Elections have consequences.
One, one moment, please.
Oh, my name's Phil St. Angel. I was, I'm surprised no one knows who I am, but forty-seven Smiley Avenue, Winslow. I'm not on any building committee. I don't teach at Winslow and I'm not on the town council. We just had an election. Fifty-four percent of the people spoke. Those people tend to not come to meetings. Those people don't come and speak at microphones, but they vote. And if you send this back to the original committee that came up with this failed plan, and make no mistake, it failed, fifty-four percent to forty-six percent, and you let the same architect and expect a different result, then I think you're wrong. This is a common sense approach from Councilman Twitchell. Form a small agile committee, get the input from the educational professionals who know what they're doing and build a building we can all support. This building committee hasn't been meeting for five years. This building committee's only been meeting for about five or six months. Don't let them fool you, okay? This committee, this committee, the most recent committee, was only formed about six months ago. Isn't that correct, Trish?
I've been on the committee for a year and a half.
Same committee? There were two committees.
I was on the same, I was on the same committee.
No, that's not true. There was, there was a committee to decide what to do and then there was a building committee. The building committee's only been in place for about six months.
I was on both committees for a year and a half.
Okay, there's two-
When it transitioned, I was in that committee.
And thank you for your service.
I'm the only council member that's done that.
But that's two committees. But this committee that came up with this plan has only been meeting for six months. We can do this. This is not, this is not a big problem, okay? I talked to a lot of voters. They had three concerns. Some of them had all three concerns, some of them had one concern, some of them had two concerns. One was, cost too much. Two, was they wanted to go K-eight. I heard that numerous times. Three, they didn't want a pack. But I learned a lot from the pack voters, from the yes voters too. I did, because I read all their posts on Facebook and I listened to all of them. And I learned three things. First of all, junior high's gotta go. I think there's a consensus in town that that's, that's the case. I think everybody in this room agrees with that. Secondly, any new additions gotta have some extra gym space. Because if we tear down the junior high, you gotta replace the gym that you have. And three, we have to have a place for the arts to do what they do in the junior high in whatever new building we have. I think if this new committee, and thank you for proposing that, Councilman Twitchell, if this new committee keeps those six guidelines in mind, we'll have a pa, a plan that can pass easily, like the last renovation plan we had, which passed three to one. Unanimous vote from the school board, unanimous vote from the town council and passed three to one because it was common sense. Anybody have any questions?
We're not having a debate, I don't think, right? I just have some information. Thank you, Phil. Go ahead.
Earl Watts, eleven Lucille Ave, District Two. My question is to the, to Councilor Twitchell, where would the decision-making authority lie with your proposed plan? Would it be at the new council that you're proposing or would it be at the advisory council? Where would the, I wanna know who makes those decisions and what's by name?
My feelings on that, we have the committee per se, the ten people, okay? Nine plus the one, okay? I don't know what you, how we would say who would have the authority, but the building, the old building committee, chance about would be the advisory committee because that, that whole building committee, minus two, were involved with the school, okay? And that's why I wanted to keep them there for advisory, okay? But three school boards, three people from the community, non-school associated. And, and the school board, the council, no, the cross section. And that's why I would put, because we here ultimately have the final say on the finance side.
No, I would say voters have the ultimate say. Who has the concern?
Not really, not really. Because, because what we put out for them, they gotta agree or disagree. Yes, yes, they have the final say. No argument. But if we, as a council, vote seven, zero against something, they're not, they're not even gonna have it as a referendum vote on. Okay? But by these, this group agreeing on something, if we went and, and went seven to nothing, that puts a message out to the public, we agree with this, this is what we would like to see. The last, the last time it went out four to three, it wasn't quite unanimous and there were different reasons behind it.
But that's, I, I- You still haven't answered my question. Where is the decision-making authority in your plan? Is it with the body of nine? Is it with the advisory committee? That's the question I'm asking.
It's the body of nine with the assistance of the advisory committee.
So, the advisory committee, the people who have done the work-
Yeah.
...provide input that might be taken or might not be taken.
I don't know how to answer that. Go ahead, Ken. You have a good, Mr. Chairman. I think it's just like last time. The building committee came to a consensus through whatever process to say, this is what we're recommending for your consideration. And then either the school board and/or the council could accept or not accept it, right? And then ultimately, this council will then make a decision as to whether we're gonna send that proposal out to the voters, just the same as last time. One of the things that I'm concerned about is that sometimes, you know, I don't, I don't want anybody to get offended, but we charge committees to bring recommendations forward. But the ultimate accountability is with this council. So, we or may not, we may or we may not accept that recommendation and it's the way with any group, not just the education group. There are subcommittees. We, we've got a solid ways subcommittee. And those folks get to the details and they will make a recommendation for the council's consideration. The council may or may not accept that. So, I think it's the same model here. This, this group of nine, you know, you know, that's been proposed, hopefully, they can reach a consensus and bring forth a proposal to the council for consideration. But they do not have the ultimate authority to make that decision.
Well, that's what just happened previously.
Right.
Exactly.
Yeah.
You had a group reach a consensus, bring it to you, and you put it before the voters.
And we also-
And you didn't change that process.
And we also had the opportunity to either accept it or not accept it.
You accepted it.
See, one of the things I think that sometimes people get confused with is that if you charge a committee to go out and review and come back with a recommendation, that's a recommendation. And I think I heard something last time that said something that we've gotta respect the work of the committee. Absolutely, we have to respect the work of the committee, but that does not translate into we have to accept that as, as the answer that we're gonna support.
And you, three of you voted not to accept that. So, the process that you're describing worked perfectly. The committee got a consensus, the committee sent that consensus to you.
Right.
You used the process available to you to send a bond to the voters and the voters spoke. spoke. That's the way the entire system's supposed to work.
Okay.
Now, why do you wanna change that process?
Because I wanna build a greater consensus coming into it. And that's what I think this, this group can do. They aren't gonna be getting into the weeds of how many classrooms and what the classroom's gonna look like and everything like that. That's what the educational professionals will be doing. But this is group will be building and understanding as well as making sure that this has had a thorough review before it goes out back to the council, and back to the school board, and out to the voters.
But didn't the educational professionals do that the first time the proposal they sent you?
Is this a quiz?
No, I'm asking you a question.
No.
About the process.
I don't think that we had a thorough enough understanding of all those options, like K through eight. You know, we, you know, you read the minutes, you go back through. There was a gap there, maybe totally appropriate, but that option didn't seem to be fully vetted based on what I could read in the minutes and the minutes and, and the meeting I went to. So learning from what didn't work, let's try something else that may work better. That's all we're saying.
Ken.
Yes.
One of the things is, when it goes back out to the voters, I don't want this to feed it a second time. I don't wanna go back a third time and a fourth time, like some, some RSU's have, have happened. And it can.
So you don't wanna work for, work for the best solution, you just want a solution that's gonna pass?
Well, that's one of the things you do need. What is the best solution? Tell me.
Obviously, I think the best solution was the one that was presented earlier. But you guys lost. I mean, elections have consequences. You are absolutely correct. I know. Where that's concerned. My concern is that you're asking questions that had best been asked two to three years ago, at the January 2013 meeting and at the January 2015 meeting. The people who maintained that continuity through the committees are the ones who provided answers. They provided answers at all the public forums that were held that people didn't go to.
That ship sailed. That ship must sail. We are where we are now. You can go back and reliving this whole thing.
Nobody's reliving anything. I'm saying that that subject matter was covered thoroughly, but people still have questions about it. So let's go back and ask the people who actually.
Why would you send this back to the same committee that already failed once?
Let's hold on, speak one at a time. It's not gonna work if everybody just starts yelling at each other. Could we just have a little bit of decorum? And you have the floor, but you don't have much more time left.
Yep, I'm done. I just wanted to know where that decision-making authority resides.
Ultimately, it's gonna reside here.
Yep.
Ultimately, we're gonna decide what goes on the ballot.
Thank you for asking.
Thank you. Okay, next stop? Anybody else?
Can I, can I just answer a question too with the K eight, seven, twelve, whatever? The other thing too that came, when it came back to us when we're looking at as teachers, we have a lot of eighth graders that take courses at the high school. That's the other piece that came into the seven, I'm sorry, yeah, the seven, twelve. Because we have kids that go over to the high school to take math. And the idea is, if they're taking those math courses in the same building, it would be easier. So that was another part of the discussion.
So I didn't see that in the minutes. All our guys go by was what was in the whole email.
Okay, thank you.
Steve, could I add that we also have kids that go from high school to Waterville High School to take classes? And that's quite a bit further.
Is it gonna be short?
Yep.
He knows that book.
I apologize.
My reputation precedes me. Kyle Price, I live at one forty-seven Clinton Avenue, and I just would try to offer a couple of answers to some questions that were asked. I was involved in both committees, and you're right, the most recent one did begin in January of this year, but that was sort of a natural progression, in my opinion, from what the study committee was supposed to be doing. And there was a space and time there where that study committee stopped, and I'm gonna address that in a moment. But the parameters that that committee was working on all the way until May of 2017 was a debt-neutral plan. We, we knew that from the very beginning, that the only way that this was gonna pass in town because of a lot of factors, the, you know, the economic climate and that sort of thing. So as we were working as committee members, we knew that. Now, we didn't try to spend to that max, but we knew that what we needed to propose needed to come in somewhere near to a zero impact on the taxpayer. And as I go back and review the notes and look at the work that we did, we were on track with that until May of this past year. So we had bond, we had debt reduction, that was a component of that, and we had cost savings. So that was an element. And I think that Mr. Saintamont was very clear as the representation of the council at these committee meetings as to what our need needed to be, to the point where he also asked the committees to pause for a while, because when we looked at the debt schedules and the economic situation, you know, we, we knew we couldn't do anything at that particular point in time. The sticker shock, I mean, I think Mr. Selwood articulated very well all of the other factors and the fact that we didn't actually have a architect hired. The sticker shock also occurred at the same time by your own auditor's report tonight in 2014, 2015, and you took out the biggest amount of money from your fund balance to keep things going, six hundred and eleven thousand in 2014 and seven hundred and twenty-nine thousand. So that sort of tells the story in my mind historically as to why there was a gap. The other thing that I'll offer is that at the point in time when that occurred, Mr. Mishu, who was the principal to junior high, and I made a report to that study committee on April fourth, because we were charged with responsibility of looking at all those K eight needs. And that's when that thought came back, as Mr. Selwood has talked about, of all the various things that needed to happen. The other thing that I know that occurred in that period of time, because I was part of those conversations, that the administration also recognized a reduction in enrollment that needed to also be factored into this. The very first plan back when the high school addition was made was a sixth, seventh, and eighth addition at the elementary school. That was just prior to my time. Enrollment numbers reduced that to a seventh, eighth addition. And so as we move forward to the seven, twelve, and the K, and I won't say pre-K, because we do have a four-year-old program at the elementary school as well. So, you know, we were looking at all those numbers and trying to figure out where that population was the best fit for the least amount of money and still being able to cover the needs of the, of the population. So one thought just to keep in mind when we're talking about that is, we knew we needed more gym space, just because of the, the heavy parks and rec use at the elementary school. So we said, well, we've got that gym over at the high school that's a half gym, we'll add on to it. Then we're trying to say to ourselves, well, how do you get the sixth, seventh, and eighth graders that need to use that facility from a K eight, pre-K eight configuration over to the high school? So very quickly started saying, well, that doesn't really work, so maybe we need to look at the gym space. So all of that stuff did happen in that period of time, and I am certainly, would make myself available. I have a pretty extensive set of notes myself. I did a summary of it, probably like Mr. Twitchell did, and I'd be very happy to participate in the future in whatever configuration that this turns out to be.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Go ahead.
Can't get up here as fast as I used to. Brayweed, against the road. I just have a question on this twenty-five-person committee. How many, other than teachers and administrators and school board, how many senior citizens were on that, were on that committee?
We didn't turn anyone away from the committee.
How many were on it?
Zero, but none of them volunteered.
Were there zero senior citizens?
There were no volunteers that were.
Yeah, well, I, I was at a meeting, the last one of these things you had, and the most repulsive statement I've ever heard at any of these meetings was that the seniors in the town of Winslow can go to the town office and apply for welfare. I think that's horrible. These seniors have been here a long time, and they've paid taxes, and they have grandchildren, they support education, they always did. But I don't think we should be insulting them in that regard. If you're gonna stick with the same committee, I think you're probably gonna have the same result. And I would like to congratulate Ben for at least proposing something, put something out there. Sure, it's not perfect, we can change it, make it better. I'd like to commend Mr. Kurian and, and Mr. Fletcher for looking out for all the taxpayers, which includes the senior citizens. And I'll hobble my seventy-nine-year-old self back to the seat.
Thank you for your input. And I would assure you that none of us take for granted what the senior citizens have done for this town. Every success that this town has is built on the shoulders of those that came before us. Whether you wanna talk about any of the administrations, whether you wanna talk about the shoulders he stands on, the shoulders the police chief stands on, the shoulders the council stands on, this community's been doing this for about thirty years, and will continue to do it in the future for another thirty years, and we will not ignore the senior citizens. One of the first things that always comes up when we start the budget is, remember, thirty percent of the people living in this town are senior citizens living on a fixed income. That's almost the first thing out of everybody's mouth as we sit down and start three months' worth of budget negotiations. And so it's always in the forefront of everybody's mind up here. And I apologize if it came across wrong at the last meeting. I'm not sure anybody would have intended to phrase it that way. I mean, I apologize.
And the only thing I can say is, I don't think anybody, anybody on this council would be considered a free spender over the last eight years, including myself on that, that thing.
We have wrestled with, with everything from economic collapse to state legislators, both houses, both parties, that fail to live up to the obligations, financial obligations to local communities. And so we have struggled with that, and we tried to do two things, not raise the taxes and not cut the legs out from underneath our educators. And we did that by drawing down on our fund balance, and we did that by ignoring the pot holes. And those are coming back to haunt us too, and that's why we did a two million dollar bond, just to try to play catch-up with that, with the roads. And I'm not gonna give any more speeches. If someone else would like to come up to the microphone, please.
My name is Nancy Aldrich. I live on Victor Terrace. Once before I retired, I was a professional. I don't look like it tonight, but anyway. My point is this, I think that the school committee, the building committee did an excellent job. It's a great proposal. Everything about it was what we needed. Where they failed, in my opinion, is that they didn't involve the community. I too was a senior citizen. And, you know, I think that if you'd had, if they had had more community involvement, then you might have come up with something that all of the people in the community could have gotten behind, not just a few. And I heard the comments twice at the meetings at the high school about seniors, and it was very insulting. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I live on twenty-eight Purple Street. My main concern with everything that I've heard tonight is that you've got two situations. One, you've got a council who is trying to do the right thing. You've got a school board who is also trying to do the right thing. And you have a disagreement on what the best route is to go. Those are the things I see. What I want most of all is to revisit the K through eight and, and understand why that won't work, given the fact that we were all told, from wherever you read and whatever you read about, that we are only gonna spend ten million dollars. If you had started with five million dollars with the elementary school and didn't take it from there through completion to get that number, to compare it with what the seven through twelve is, then if that had been done, then we would have less concern, I would have less concern about that. I do have some concerns about the seven through twelve. I've talked to faculty members, not in this area, but in other school systems, that have had similar situations. And one of the things they mentioned was that the, that the nine through twelve students have a different perspective than do the six through eight people, children. And I, I understand that if, if you have to put them there, maybe that's the right thing. One mention of the bell schedules was another thing that was concerning. How you, how you manage that is a, it's a tough task to do, when you've got the seven through eight, seven and eight, and the nine through twelve. I'm not an educator, but I, I believe that if there's any way at all to look at this in the perspective of looking at K through eight, and that it's not exorbitantly more expensive than the one that we came up with, that we ought to at least consider it. That would be my goal, if I was hoping that we would look at it that way. And that's, that's what I have to say.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
I am Ken Rogers, South Reynolds Road, and my issue is more immediate than what to do next. The junior high from Mr. Fletcher, on a video I watched, has had no maintenance done to the boiler system in a while. It's become a major point of the junior high needs to be shut down, since the junior high did not need to be shut down, and the boilers already failed once. Boilers are a pretty simple system, especially with low-pressure steam, which is old technology. What's the plan for making it work through the winter this year? Is there gonna be money spent on that, that the kids will have warm? It's already been one sixty-degree day where the cold air was blowing on them, and the next day they were roasting at eighty-five. This can't be that tough of a problem. What's the plan for the junior high right now? I have two kids that are in it right now.
Shelley just left too, right? I'd assume that we have to do essential maintenance. We were trying to avoid doing capital improvements, but we have to keep it running while it's, while it's open.
You have a good, Mr. Chairman. I think that even if the bond had passed. We, we had two more years in the junior high.
Correct.
I think that's right. Right? So there has to be the appropriate maintenance done to make sure that it is warm, safe, and is functioning as a school.
Sure.
So I don't think, just 'cause we didn't pass a bond, or we did pass a bond, we, we in any way, and I wish Shelley was here, I, I am confident that the school administration will make sure that the investments, maintenance that needs to be done is done.
And that's in an immediate timeframe, because it's gonna get very cold very soon.
Yeah, you know, even if the bond had passed.
Yeah.
There was gonna be two more years.
Construction. Exactly.
So, you know, it's not like you can just walk away from it.
So as a follow-up, you had said that no maintenance has been done in years to it. I assume there was budgeted money for that. Who authorized it not being spent, and where did that money go?
I don't think I said that.
Oh.
Maybe what I said was that to bring it up to a standard, you know, that the estimate was a considerable amount of money. I've heard twelve to fourteen million. Now, what that means isn't that its maintenance hasn't been done, but to bring it up to a standard, like, for example, the windows. You know, the windows are not very energy efficient, so if we thought we were gonna be in that building for another twenty years.
Yeah.
You would make those capital investments to bring all those up to standard, like the boiler system, right?
Sure.
So I think it's a question of making long-term investments versus doing short-term maintenance to make sure that it is properly maintained.
If I might too. I think what you're gonna find is that we'll make, they'll make, obviously, they'll make emergency maintenance decisions that will be there. But as systems gets old, as pipes get constricted, I think it's the uniformity of the heat and the efficiency of the boiler in the building, you know, to have uniform heat through it, is probably compromised at this point with our failure. And that's not, you know, you're not gonna resolve those issues. You're not gonna start replacing pipes that are going to answer those questions of efficiency or even heat distribution through the whole facility.
But if they're, if they're at a point of fail.
Yes.
And the video that I watched showed that this was falling down. I mean, the summertime would have been the right time to do this, while the kids were out, right? Tear a room, tear a wall down, replace a pipe? So are we at the point where every day, every week, we're gonna see the school is closed because another pipe broke, shutting the school down? Do we know that?
I'm not sure we know.
Yes, Steve, through the, through the chair. We.
Uh, we as a council cannot make those decisions. We budget money for the school, the school addresses X amount of money.
Yep.
The school board and stuff, they're the ones that make the decision of where this money goes, what needs to be done. They spend the money, they get it done. We have no control over that.
So you authorize money to the school.
Yes.
Should have been taken care of.
Yes.
Thank you. That was what I was after. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do you want to speak there?
If you would like to go, I want you to be brief.
Yeah, yeah, I'll be brief. Because we can't lie neither.
Um, regarding the heating system and other things at the junior high and such, I mean, obviously, I mean, we've all seen the writing on the wall for a while that, uh, putting major capital into that building is not something we want to, uh, do. And those sorts of things weren't budgeted for major capital projects. Yes, uh, we're doing maintenance. Obviously, it comes down to a judgment call as to, gee, uh, as in my car, should I get rid of this car this year or do I think I can get another year out of it? I mean, I think that's kind of where we at with a, a number of systems at the junior high. Uh, so we're doing the things we need to do, what we think we need to do. I mean, a lot of pipes sitting in the walls and other such things. Uh, but we're, we're trying to do the things that we, we can do, uh, that we think are reasonable based upon, uh, the long-term plan of not being in that building. But hopefully keep it going in the shorter term. Again, like anything else, you never know when something's going to break. But, uh, gutting out hundreds and hundreds of feet of pipe, uh, on an old system is a major capital expenditure and that's not just maintenance. So we're kind of getting by. So, uh, we are spending our money on maintenance. We know we're going to be there at least a couple of years. And I'm sure as issues keep coming up, uh, you know, Shelley will stay on that. But, uh, it's kind of a judgment call as to how long can you go with what you got.
Anybody else? Go ahead.
So Peter Tivitaw, the acting superintendent, um, assistant superintendent prior to that, who did the titles, by the way, that you're hearing about with the artist, with eight years of good record. So we're working hard at making that happen. I don't live in Winslow. I don't live in Waterville. I don't live in Vassabur. I live in China Village. On a good day, on my arm, it's feeling pretty good. I can probably throw a rock and almost hit the line if the rock keeps rolling. Couple of things. I think we're all here for the same reason. The school needs you. You need the school. Winslow is a community that has tremendous pride. Tremendous pride. We want new people moving into our community. You do that by having an outstanding school system. You do that by having people wanting to come here. The minutes that people keep talking about, 2012, these committees started to meet. Regardless of what we call them, these committees started to meet. We worked long and hard. I took the majority of these minutes. I can probably find most of what you're looking for at some point, someplace. One of the things that was mentioned that I would like to address is that many options were discussed. Looking at a seven, 12 model because the cost of adding on to the elementary school is approaching $12 million without adding gym space or other needed multipurpose rooms for the junior high population. That was a stick of shock for those who were involved in that at the time. One of the things that I've always taken pride in in my 37 years of education is treating people with dignity and respect. And one of the things that I've always taken pride in is making sure that you have people working together. And if they are working together, you acknowledge that. I don't disagree that we need to get together and have additional conversations. Don't disagree at all. I think that some of you sitting around this table absolutely need to be a part of that. Ken, you are a very influential person in this community. You are somebody who should absolutely be a part of that. Because I think that when you say something, people trust you. You've been here for a long time, they listen. That's not to say that anything's been done wrong with anybody who's in this committee. Because I think people have worked exceptionally hard to provide you with a, with a product. If the product is, has too high of a price tag, you say no. This group goes back to the drawing board with additional people on it, however you want to do it. But that has to go back to the board. They have conversations of, oh, how they would like to do that as well. If I'm not feeling well, I'm probably going to go to my doctor. Because my doctor has some knowledge of medicine. Probably not going to go to my mechanic because he can do a heck of a job on my car. Just looking at some of the people that are in here. As the acting superintendent, I think I'm working pretty hard right now. I think I've made some decisions the last two weeks that's kept us all in a pretty good seed. Nobody really knows what those are because they're things you can't talk about. When I look at some of the lists here, I'm basically seeing we're going to take the information you've worked on since 2012. We're going to use it if we think it looks good. We might not, we might not use it. But the idea is you've got a bunch of people who've done a tremendous amount of work. Acknowledge that by allowing them to be a part of it is one of the things that I'm trying to say. This is, goes back to the board. I'm sure they'll have more conversations about this proposal. Look at one of their thoughts, what would they like to do? I'm quite certain that people want to work together. And I'm quite certain that we need to revisit and inform people because I think if we dig deep, you'll see a lot of the questions that you have. Those, those things have been discussed and can be answered for you. Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak?
Mr. Chairman, since I see no one else willing to speak right now, I make a motion to adjourn.
Second. Ben Moon is seconded to adjourn. Is there any discussion?
Good, Mr. Chairman. I think, you know, I think we've had a pretty productive meeting. I think we've exchanged some ideas. And I would just ask that, as, as indicated, that the school board will go back and have their conversations. And if we can get their response as soon as possible, that will tell us which direction to go. Thank you.
Any other? Go ahead.
I says, I think we have to make a decision. The council's also which direction we want to go. But we haven't, I don't think we've, we've said that this is an idea that the council, this is a proposal that, that Councilman Twitchell has, but I don't know if we've got a consensus that the council wants to go.
We don't have an say.
We have, yeah, we have no say. The, the school board can, yeah. So we have to wait to get.
We could vote to approve it, but it's kind of an academic because until the school board reaches their, their decision, then we can't really. Any further discussion? I'll reply with adjourn. To adjourn.